The planning board for December 20, 2012, now come to order. Anyone wishing to address the board, if you'd please fill out a green sheet and miss ask you for the record, we would appreciate it. Could we have the roll call, Ms. Washington?
Certainly. Mr. Hurt?
Here.
Ms. Remark?
Here.
Mr. McGinnis?
Here.
Mr. Bohan? Mr. Moore?
Here.
Ms. Washington? Here. Mr. Hoitsma?
Here.
Ms. Benjamin is absent this evening. Mr. Davis? Mr. Neal?
Here.
Ms. La Sage?
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. First is the approval of minutes for November 15, 2012. Do we have any corrections?
Motion to approve.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Do we have new items? Ms. Washington?
Certainly. Site plan approval, Museum of Arts and Sciences, DEV 2012-124.
May we hear from staff?
Yes, good evening. Tom White, our planning department. This is a request by Robert Merrill of Cobb Cole and Robert Ball, Zev Cohen and Associates, on behalf of Andrew Sandahl, Executive Director of Museum of Arts and Sciences, for approval of a site plan for 23 and 1/2 acre of land, a site located at 352 South Nova Road. The proposed site plan is for construction of a 26,700 square foot museum with associated parking, utilities and stormwater facilities. The new museum and its current art collection is being generously donated by C.C. and Hyatt Brown. On November 15, the planning board unanimously recommended approval to expand the existing Museum of Arts and Sciences semi-public use permit. During that meeting, the board received a presentation of the site plan, and that this meeting is a follow-up to formally approve the site plan that you received in your package last month. Last night, the city commission approved the expansion of the current semi-public use permit for the museum project. The Land Development Code, Article 4, Section 8.2 requires the planning board's review and approval for site plans in excess of 20,000 square feet. The technical review team has reviewed the site plan and determined that it meets all the requirements of the code and the previously reviewed semi-public use permit. Technical items noted in the TRT's review comments will be addressed in the final site plan as stated in the applicant's response to TRT comments. Staff recommends approval of the site plan, and I'll remind you that a majority vote of the planning board members present voting is required for approval. The applicant, Rob Merrill, is present. If he would like to provide additional comments or wait to see whether the planning board has comments for the project team or staff. Thank you.
Any questions of staff? May we hear from the applicant, Mr. Merrill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, Rob Merrill with Cobb Cole, 150 Magnolia, here in Daytona Beach. On behalf of the museum, I've got several folks here with me tonight. Andrew Sandahl's here, the Executive Director of Museum. Tom Hart, General Counsel. Bobby Ball just walked in from Zev Cohen's, and Paul Monberger are all here to answer questions, as am I. You all spent a great deal of time, I think, talking about this at a almost site plan level at the semi-public use approval that we had in November, so I'm not going to go over it all with you again. As Tom told you last night, the city commission also looked at the plans and approved the semi-public use, so we have a unanimous wave of support so far, so hopefully you'll continue with that. So any questions that you have, we're here to answer for you tonight.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Merrill? Hearing none. No one in the audience speaking for or against? Board, I'm ready for your comments.
Make a motion, we approve site plan approval, Museum of Arts and Sciences, DEV 2012-124.
Thank you. We have a motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, pass.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five?
Item number five, Land Development Code Text Amendment, Wastewater Collection and Treatment System, DEV 2012-129.
Mr. Morozak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Dennis Morozak, planner with the City of Daytona Beach. The next item tonight is a request by the City of Daytona Beach's Utility Department to amend the Land Development Code, Article 7, Environmental Requirements, Section 6, Sanitary Sewer System, concerning direct and indirect contributions to the city's wastewater collection, treatment and disposal system. This section of the Land Development Code does regulate the discharge of pollutants into the city's wastewater treatment center. Limitations to the types and the amounts of the pollutants released into the system are governed by federal and state requirements. The proposed LEC text amendment is proposed by the city's Utility Department. The proposed changes are required by state regulations. Some of the changes include adding or modifying definitions, providing more detailed testing, establishing best management practices, removing the local limit table from the Land Development Code. This change would require approval through a resolution at the city commission to make changes to the local limit table. And also, it revises the city's current fat, oil and grease program, or the FOG program. I just wanted to point out, we do have Robin Cook, the city's Regulatory Compliance Officer, is here tonight, and she is available to answer any questions on the specific item. As far as a recommendation, staff does recommend approval of the request to amend the Land Development Code concerning direct and indirect contributions to the city's wastewater collection, treatment and disposal systems. Majority vote of the planning board members present and voting is required to recommend approval to the city commission. And that concludes my presentation.
Are there any questions? I was wondering, where you're saying that it would replace many of the inflexible standards in the LEC, and maybe Robin would be the one to answer this? I don't know.
Give way to Robin Cook.
Okay.
Hi, as you said, I am Robin Cook. I'm the Regulatory Compliance Officer with the Utilities Department. Basically, what we've done here is it creates EPA's stream, and they call it the streamline rule, has provided for utility departments to incorporate best management practices so that we can work with businesses rather than saying, "This is the hard and fast rule." It's more like saying, "This is where we want to go to. Let's work together to get there." And that's part of the process.
Having been on the receiving end, many years ago, I'm very glad to hear that. That's very good. That's the only clarification I have on it.
Okay.
Any other questions? Are there anyone wanting to speak for? Anyone wanting to speak against? If you're a business owner, you might want to look at this. Hearing none. Board, I'm ready for your comments.
Motion to approve Land Development Code Text Amendment, Wastewater Collection and Treatment System, DEV 2012-129.
Second?
We have a motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item number six?
Rezoning to OP Speedway Shops, DEV 2012-056, quasi-judicial hearing.
Mr. Morozak?
All right, thank you. Dennis Morozak, again, planner with the City of Daytona Beach. Once again, the request is by Paul Hollob, on behalf of Speedway Investors LLC, to rezon 2.47 acres of land located at 1173 International Speedway Boulevard in Daytona Beach, from R1A single-family to OP office professional. To give you an idea of where the site is located, you have seen this before. It came in for a request to rezon to a planned commercial development. The current request is to rezon it to the OP rezoning. Site's located on West ISB. Give you an aerial. It does show the five individual parcels that would be combined later on during development of the site. The future land use of the site is office transition, and the current zoning of the site is R1A single-family residential. Again, the proposed zoning to the site would be OP office professional. The current zoning is R1A single-family, which is not compatible with the city's comprehensive plan. Approval of the OP office professional rezoning request would make the subject property compliant and consistent with the comp plan. A site plan is not required with this rezoning request. So as for a recommendation, approval of this rezoning request is a policy decision based on staff's analysis, planning board review and recommendation, and ultimately, city commission approval. Staff supports the board's recommendation. An affirmative vote of six by the planning board, six or more by the planning board members, shall be required to recommend approval to the city commission. And that will conclude staff's presentation.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McGinnis?
Was there any consideration of any other zoning category, for example, RP, in the discussion of the submission?
This particular zoning classification would have been, I believe, it would have been the best possible zoning classification, just because of the text amendment that was associated with the comprehensive plan, saying that the property needed to be zoned to a large-scale office development. So this would have probably been the most logical choice for that.
Follow-up question. Is not RP also a compatible zoning category?
It would have been a compatible zoning.
The comp plan category.
It would have been compatible, but probably would have offered additional uses that weren't in keeping with the large-scale office development.
Ms. Remark?
Just one note on page four of the staff report. Access to the site is proposed via right-in, right-out access and directional access on US 92, and a secondary access on Central Avenue. When this was before, there was consideration given to actually closing Central Avenue back to the neighborhood.
That's correct.
Is that, when might that be a point of discussion? And I know this is just a rezoning, but since we mentioned Central Avenue in here, I was curious when that might be a point of discussion.
And those locations were actually associated with the traffic impact analysis, and so the numbers were run with the traffic impact analysis. And if it comes back that there needs to be a modification to the locations of the ingress and egress of those points, based on staff's review of the TIA, then modifications can be made at that time to the site plan. The site plan would reflect.
It would be at the site plan.
The site plan would reflect what the traffic impact analysis would indicate.
Okay. I thought so, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, and it would be required at that time.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Was Rick about to say something? Walton? Okay.
Okay. Could we hear from a representative for the applicant, Mr. James Sowers?
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. I'm James Sowers with Wright, Casey &amp; Stowers, 44 West Granada Boulevard in Ormond Beach, here on behalf of Speedway Investors LLC and Mr. Hollob. We're here to answer questions without belaboring the history of this. Obviously, earlier this year, comprehensive plan amendment and a rezoning were proposed that went through the process. We had a number of meetings, lengthy discussions, and through that process, there was a lot of discussion about the office uses. And so what we're proposing here tonight is the rezoning to make this property have a consistent zoning category with the future land use, which is that office transition. If you look at the city's, the comprehensive plan zoning matrix, zoning compatibility matrix, it does include the RP, it also includes the OP, and then goes on from there. And so I really do believe that this OP rezoning is in keeping with the future land use, which we are required by law to defer to for compatibility's sake. So we're here to answer questions. I would like to defer the opportunity to come back and answer some additional questions based on any comments that may arise. But, you know, we agree with the staff report. This will bring forward that level of compatibility, and this is simply the rezoning to allow for those office and professional uses.
Are there any questions, Mr. Sowers? Yes, Val?
I'm not sure where we are with this process, but I remember the other project very well. And I'm curious to know, at the stage you are in right now, has this project, we're talking about rezoning, but has this project been discussed with the residents in that area?
I think we have several that are going to speak tonight.
We have not gone back and had another neighborhood meeting. We thought the message was crystal clear at the city commission, when we had a nearly three-hour meeting. And the directive was, from the Highlands Neighborhood's attorney, they are not opposed, they have not been opposed to office, which is consistent with the comprehensive plan, which is consistent with the vision for the gateway. I watched the video this afternoon again. And so we feel that an office professional rezoning, we're not at that site plan level. I'll defer to my client, obviously, as to whether he will, you know, incorporate another neighborhood meeting into the site plan once we get to that phase. But this is early on in kind of restarting this process to get some level of assuredness as to what can go on this site. Because currently, as I mentioned, the zoning is R1A, the least intensive zoning category that's actually a residential future land use category. The office transitional, if you look at the matrix, is far down on that list. And so this is meant to be a buffer, as we talked about earlier in the year. But we feel that it's absolutely appropriate, and that the sentiments from the neighborhood at that meeting were crystal clear.
Mr. Hoitsma?
Yeah, on page four, you indicated that you were going to have right-in and right-out, you know, as far as the structure was concerned. I'm sorry, as far as the law was concerned. But then you also indicated, you also indicated that you would have a directional access on US 92, and I didn't know what that meant. What does that mean?
Mr. Chairman, for your record, Paul Hollob, applicant. We, in our previous plans, had a directional left turn on US 92 that we had discussed with FDOT for the previous projects. It would be a left turn into the project for westbound traffic.
Oh, okay. For westbound traffic.
And we never made formal application for it, but we did have preliminary discussions with them. Now, this may be totally irrelevant with this new product, because they may or may not allow it with an office professional product versus a retail product.
Oh, I see, so we don't know that yet.
No, that's something that we would do at site plan level. Once we had a site plan that was nailed down, then we would go have a formal application with FDOT.
Got you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. McGinnis?
It's kind of a question comment. The last application we had on this was a definite retail site plan. Am I correct on that?
Correct.
Okay.
No, you had a.
You had a comprehensive, you had two applications. You had a comprehensive plan amendment and the rezoning was for a PD.
Right.
For the retail.
For retail, okay. It was a PD, okay. And at that point, you did meet with the neighborhood. And the discussion at that point was, for the PD, they included these retail uses with all of the concerns. And here, we have a rezoning, but we don't have a site plan yet because there's no project yet. So it seemed to me, and I don't know whether this seemed to you, that the potential uses for this rezoned property were not something that was fully discussed at the last submission, which had a use, a specific use that was under discussion. Now we're doing a rezoning with a as-yet unknown project on the property. So it would seem to me that, as a member of the public, I would be concerned with what possibly could go on to this rezoned property. And with that, did you envision having that kind of discussion with the neighborhood? The possibilities for this property rezoned to what you want to rezone it to?
Well, where we've been, Mr. Hollob had a meeting with the neighborhood group. We went through to the planning board. Later, there was a second meeting with the neighborhood group. And those discussions not only talked about the comprehensive plan, the PCD, but also more of a site plan level of analysis and the specific uses, including retail. Again, I go back to that evening at the city commission, when everyone came out, we all made our presentations, and the directive was clear about this office. And so we've gone back, and we've looked at this and said, "Okay, well, the office professional's consistent with the future land use that we have. And in terms of specific uses, you know, with any zoning category, there are numerous uses. And with this one, it's the office professional that's right there, and it is what's consistent." So that's where we stand at this point.
But you didn't feel it was necessary to get additional input from the neighborhood?
Could I?
At this juncture, we have nothing to share with them, other than a rezoning. Our last application, we spent close to $100,000 in soft costs to make a presentation to them for a retail product, and we certainly can't go down that path again. We need the zoning, then we plan. Typically, that's what happens in this city and all municipalities, where you'll do the rezoning, and we'll come up with a site plan. Certainly, we may have a meeting with them in the future, once we have a site plan nailed down, but we don't have anything to share with them today. We don't have any tenants, we don't have any leases in place. We have a general site plan, they've seen that. That site plan may not change dramatically. But we really wouldn't have anything to share with them if we called a meeting, simply to tell them that we're going for an office professional zone, and here are the uses that are permitted.
That was my point, actually. To go through the uses permitted in this zoning.
And we did notify everybody within 500 feet, certified male, of this meeting in the neighborhood, and also the neighborhood HOA, Phyllis Hogan. We notified her also of this meeting tonight. And they'll also have another opportunity, I believe, at city council in January and February. Thank you.
Any other questions? Tracy?
If, just a sort of question comment. OP is pretty straightforward. It's business and professional services, period, right? Because anything else that's under that are either conditional or special, whether, I don't envision them turning this into a cemetery, or a nursing convalescent home or anything, and they would have to meet all of the conditions and requirements for conditional and special use. So it'd be your standard office and professional services, correct?
Yes, for a variance.
Well, right. But you don't get a, it wouldn't be a variance to allow retail. You don't get those kinds of, it has to be, I get that. Okay. Because actually, and I hear you referring to the commission, even before it got to the commission, it was quite thoroughly discussed here. And I thought the planning board was even as clear as the commission, that what made sense was office professional uses. And so I'm actually very glad to see Mr. Hollob coming back with that, because he does, you know, very much quality developments. But what I think everyone in the city was looking for was a development that would fit where they are. And I think this is a, for me, I think this is a great first start to it. RP is what I would normally go for, but when you look at what's happened on both sides of that area, it's residential because there are a few houses left. It's already transitioned to the office professional in what fronts US 92, where it's not school. So I, I mean, I just tend to agree, and I, but I will say, I look forward to the site plans, where we'll get into those details. But I think it fits.
Yes.
This is more of a comment, too. I think it's a perfect transitional thing for the neighborhood. It separates 92 off, you know, of the neighborhood. It's a perfect fit. There'll never be a single-family home there. And, you know, office professional, there can be offices that people actually in the neighborhood can walk to. If there's something that they need, they can physically walk without getting in their car. And I think it buffers the neighborhood from 92, and I think it's a perfect place for it.
Any other questions? Hearing none. We'll go to speakers for, Mr. Fred Favorite.
Good evening.
My name is Fred Favorite. I live at 100 Terragona Way, and I have, for the last 10 years, lived there. And it is residential where I live, but there's a lot of traffic there. And we live, we own all the way up to Terragona Arch. And I think that this is a wonderful plan for this piece of property, which should be zoned, I would imagine, first, before they go through the expense of doing the whole thing like they did the last time. That would be my opinion. And I'm not against it at all, and I haven't spoken with any of the neighbors, but we all were notified by registered letter, those adjoining neighbors were all notified by Mr. Hollob. And I haven't spoken to him or seen him for six or eight months. So I'm here completely on my own, and I love living here in Daytona.
All right.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have one speaker against, Mr. Roland Blossom.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Roland Blossom, 1171 Orange Avenue, Daytona Beach, speaking personally, as well as as representative for the Homeowners Association. And I think there's initially one point of clarification that I think I need to make, because the attorney for the applicant has indicated that at the last meeting, it was perfectly clear that we were okay with this particular rezoning. I don't recall there ever being a discussion at the city commission meeting about an OP rezoning. There was discussion about whether office would be a better fit there, and whether or not we would be in agreement with office use. And the answer was resounding yes. But there was never a discussion about this specific rezoning category. This, obviously, is the highest intensity of office development that you can have, and there are other alternative categories that could be used. And I think it is, it would have been beneficial to the applicant to meet with the Highlands Association and discuss the rezoning category that was going to be requested, because there is some real concern. This is our home. This is where we live. This is where we have chosen to make our stand in Daytona Beach. And as you know, this is a low-density residential neighborhood. It's an immediate jump, although it's transitional, and we certainly don't attempt to indicate that it is not a transitional category. But it is a higher intensity, a higher level of office and professional zoning. We would request that there be some specific discussion, perhaps from staff, as to what the particular zoning categories that are authorized by the future land use matrix would allow, would consist of. The staff report does indicate that there is, you know, what the permitted and the conditional uses would be for this category, but it does not speak at all to the other categories within that zoning category, the OP category. I'm not here, and the only reason I put against on the form was because there was no other alternative, other than to say no. And I am not against this property being used for office development, but I would thoroughly like to have a better idea of what kind of office and professional development ultimately will be authorized within that zoning district.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Walton, could you address any of that?
I think Tracy read.
I think Tracy read from the permitted use chart for the OP. Dennis has his code there. If you could read what would be allowed in the RP, if I understand his question, and what would be allowed in the office?
Sure. As far as the RP, RP is at the, on our pyramid system, it is really at the bottom of the pyramid, so it does include all of the uses that are permitted in the R zoning districts. So, it is the business and professional service would be a permitted use, along with R3 permitted uses, which include churches and all of the RR permitted uses. RR permitted uses are the single-family, duplex, and multifamily. Also, the R3 conditional uses are permitted in the RP zoning. R3 conditional uses include, let's see, churches, daycares, nursing convalescent homes, and schools. It also includes all of the RR conditional uses, which includes multifamily complexes and off-street parking lots. It also includes community residential homes and it says development project offices. Also, for special uses, it includes things such as a special use clubs and lodges. It also would include things such as fraternities and sororities, recovery home treatment facilities. Also, it includes carnivals and circuses, cemeteries, country clubs, golf courses, duplex subdivisions, townhome developments, and so on. So, it has a pretty wide variety of different, a much more expansive type of use that would be permitted in the RP category.
No, that's RP. OP is actually-
That's the RP category. That was all of the things. If it were to be the RP, that would be permitted in the RP category.
Could I ask one question? OP does not have the collapsing pyramid of our other categories, does it? It's a straight category, correct?
Yes, and I can, give me a second, I will pull that up for you.
OP would actually be less restrictive, or more restrictive.
Okay, the OP would permit it as, and when you look at the pyramid, it is at the bottom of the pyramid. It doesn't include any of the other business district zoning. It includes as a permitted use, business and professional offices. As a conditional use, it's that carnivals and circuses, churches, and nursing homes, and it's not certain if they could even meet those as a conditional use. And then the special use is cemeteries, country clubs, golf clubs, daycare centers, and schools. I was going to say, Tom just handed me our matrix, which kind of tells us the land use category and perhaps would, excuse me, what zoning districts would perhaps fit into that, that, that matrix, that land use category. Correct me, it's office transition, transitional? Is that where we are?
Yes.
Okay. That would require, that would permit RP, HM, which is a hospital medical, which is an intense type of a use, the OP, T2 and T2A, which are tourist districts, which allow more intense type uses, the planned commercial district, which is what he had come for the last time and applied for, a PMD, a planned master development, which he doesn't have the size to do, and AG as a holding category for the property. So, those are his limitations as to what would fit into the, to the matrix for zoning versus the land use categories.
Any other questions?
The permitted uses under both are exactly the same, though.
No.
Business and professional. Except that RP permits less intensive uses in the pyramid scheme.
OP, permitted uses in the OP are business and professional services, period.
Permitted uses in RP are also business and professional services.
And then all of the single-family, multifamily-
The residential uses above that.
Correct, exactly.
Multifamily apartment, parking lots.
Less intensive than business or professional.
But additional type of uses, yeah. Yes, correct.
All right. Board, I'm ready for your discussion, if we have any left.
I think we discussed it.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we approve.
Wait, I have discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just, it's really a comment. I agree the OP category is a, a transition between the residential and ISB, because across ISB is really the school. Usually, we look on the RP category as a buffer category between single-family residential and anything else. And I guess the challenge I'm having is envisioning my RP category as a buffering the residential. It always seemed to me that the RP category provided more protection for the individual. For example, does, maybe this is a question. Does the, the intensity of development, height limits, compatibility, are all of those issues the same under development that would happen under an OP as opposed to an RP?
I'm not exactly sure. I'd have to take a look at that, but I did want to point out, there is a, there is a neighborhood policy that says that this particular property is to be developed as a large-scale office development. So, the residential component would be off the table because they want to be permitted to do that because of the neighborhood policy.
But that's the same point on the PCD. If they rezoned to a PCD, we'd have a plan and it would be limited to office.
Yeah, but if this is zoned RP, that-
If it were zoned RP, they, they wouldn't even be permitted to do the residential because of that restriction, the neighborhood policy.
And the comp plan.
It would be office. And then all of those other conditional uses and whatever might fit into that category.
Any other questions?
I do just think one thing on the compatibility, I don't know if what, if that's what carries in, but I think Article 18 speaks to higher intensity next to single-family or lower intensity. It doesn't matter what the zoning, it talks about intensity.
Yeah, there's certain setbacks in the height.
Right. And those would apply, whether this is RP or OP, because you're talking about, or not, it would apply based on the fact that this is a higher intensity use, correct?
Right.
Okay.
It applies in all zoning districts.
Okay, that's right.
And it has required minimum setbacks for a non-residential structure adjacent to single-family residential use or district.
Okay.
So, the intensity and compatibility is going to be the same, whether it's OP or RP?
Right. For the compatibility standards.
Okay. That was, my concern was the compatibility of professional or office next to single-family.
Any other comments?
Make a motion, we approve rezoning to OP Speedway Shops Development 2012-056.
Second.
I'd like a roll call vote on this. I think we've had quite a bit of discussion. I think we need to be pretty clear on it.
Okay. Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Ms. Remar?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Bohan is not here. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Washington, yes. Mr. Hoytsmann? Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. LaSage?
Yes.
I don't think we need a draw call.
All right.
You just wanted to hear Kathy.
Good discussion.
Ready for the next item?
Okay. Item number seven, site plan approval, Trade Winds Apartment Complex, DEV 2012-105.
All righty, thank you. Dennis Morozek, planner with the City of Daytona Beach. The next item tonight is a request by Mark Doust on behalf of Richard McKenna of Com Trust Holdings III LLC to approve a site plan for 21 acres of land generally located east of Bill France Boulevard at the southwest corner of Dunn Avenue and Jimmy Ann Drive. The proposed site plan is for construction of a 240-unit apartment complex designated to accommodate student housing. The item is before the planning board today because the project does exceed the 20,000 square feet of building area, giving the planning board authority to review and approve the application. As far as the location of the proposed apartment complex, it's again at the southwest corner, southwest corner of Dunn and Jimmy Ann. The future land use of the site is Level 2 residential, which is a multifamily land use, and the zoning of the property is R2B multifamily. I wanted to give you an overview of the, of the, the site kind of zoomed in a little bit over there. Dunn Avenue, again, is to the north over here. Jimmy Ann runs north and south over here to the, to the east of the property. I have overlaid the potential site plan onto the area to give you an idea of the potential layout of the property. You see the, I just want to point out a couple of features. You see the retention areas, the compensating storage and the retention areas. They've provided an access point off of Dunn Avenue. Primary access point is off of Jimmy Ann. There is extensive pedestrian connections within the development and possibly in the future, based on the traffic impact analysis return, I'll see more access points out to the, out to the Jimmy Ann and a future transportation stop location. Some of the details of the proposed plan, again, it is a 240 multifamily apartment complex. It is designed for student housing, however, the complex itself would not discriminate and it would permit anybody to be able to use the facility. The density of the proposed project is 11.2 units per acre. 20 units per acre is the max, based on the land use. It's approximately 260,000 square feet of building space with 11 residential buildings. The plan provides for 598 parking places. Code does require only 480, so they did overpark the development. And there is a proposed clubhouse and amenities center, offering things such as fitness center, basketball court, swimming pool, and other amenities. Provided elevations of the proposed clubhouse in one of the buildings. You see, it's a three-story buildings. The items have been reviewed. The design has been reviewed by the city's technical review team, and it does meet the LDC design standards for the building. As far as the TIA, the applicant has submitted a traffic impact analysis to the city. The applicant has already agreed to provide an enhanced traffic stop along Jimmy Ann for public transportation. City's traffic consultant is reviewing the traffic impact analysis. Additional pedestrian connections, as I mentioned, will be added as needed based on the response that we get from the city's consultant. Any outstanding technical review team comments will be resolved prior to a final site plan approval. There are a couple out there having to do with some backflow preventers and a few other things, but they will be resolved. And just to point out that a school concurrency certificate has been issued for this application. As for a recommendation, staff recommends approval of the site plan for the 21 acres of land located east of Bill France Boulevard at the southwest corner of Dunn Avenue and Jimmy Ann Drive for construction of a 240-unit apartment complex, subject to the resolution of any outstanding staff and technical review team comments. A majority vote of the planning board members present and voting is required for approval. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Any questions to staff?
I have one. When you have related, I thought there was, on page five, talking about the buffers, it says, "The existing trees and understory and natural vegetation will remain on the southern property line." Is, I think, maybe I'm getting north and south mixed up, but the southern looked like that's where all of their stormwater grading is.
Let me pull up the aerial again over here and I'll kind of back this up a little bit and see if I can point it out. Okay, the southern portion is, there is a lot of the compensating storage over here, but it also includes a strip that's going to be located over here, which I think is 25 feet.
Okay, so, even though it looks blue, it's actually green.
Right, that's going to be required to be also protected.
Okay. I just, well, I was fine with it until I saw the picture.
I shouldn't have put it up there.
No, no, that was good.
Any other questions? Could we hear from the engineer for the project, Mr. Doust?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Mark Doust and I'm the project engineer for the project. Our offices are located at 536 North Halifax, Daytona Beach. Also with me tonight is Ron Buckley, who is the developer of the project, Les Thomas, who's the architect, and also Dan Diatana, who's our traffic engineer. I'd like to start out by wishing you happy holidays and a merry Christmas. I honestly do feel like I'm bringing gifts tonight because this is a project which I think we have needed for a long time. If you go to other towns that have institutions of higher learning, you'll find several of these types of complexes. But for some reason, in Daytona Beach, we haven't had one, at least not until now. So, we're very pleased to be part of the team that's bringing it to you. I think Dennis's staff report gave a good overview. I'm here, if you have any questions, as is the rest of the team.
Any questions?
Just have a comment, I have a question. It's just, this project, I know a lot of projects like this, like there's at Gainesville, there at Tallahassee, there at the University of Central Florida. I have a lot of friends that their kids have lived in these things, that, you know, the bedrooms have their own bathroom and their little study areas in there. Then they have the common area out with the common kitchen and the common living room. And it seems the way to go. And I don't know how come we've never had it, so I'm glad to be bringing it forward for you all, bring it forward.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
All right.
Looking at the site plan, I love it. I love the idea. And I'm just curious to know, is this, are the plans to be a tin roof, or does it just look that way?
Actually, the clubhouse has a metal seam roof, kind of give it a little bit more of an edgier look. The multifamily buildings themselves have shingles of an architectural grade.
Okay.
So, that's the, they actually, two types of roof.
Okay. That's what I was curious about. I think it's an excellent project.
Thank you.
Okay. We have no speakers for our guests. Project board, I'm ready for your discussion.
Recommend, Mr. discussion, recommend site plan approval, Trade Winds Apartment Complex, DEV 2012-105.
Second. We have a motion and a second.
He was second, I was motion.
Mr. Hurt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Item number eight, park facility renaming, DEV 2012-135.
Thank you again, Dennis Morozek, planner with the City of Daytona Beach. The final item tonight is a request by Delora Hyacinth to rename the athletic fields at Derbyshire Park and Sports Complex, located at 849 Derbyshire Road, Daytona Beach, to the Harold V. Lucas Junior Athletic Fields, to commemorate Mr. Lucas's contributions to the city of Daytona Beach. And Mr. Lucas, he has served the City of Daytona Beach community for more than seven decades. As far as facility renaming requirements, 50 signatures are required by the applicant to submit for review. The applicant has provided 160 requesting the name change. And a statement is required to support the proposed renaming. The applicant has provided material, and I have placed it in your planning board packet to support the renaming. The application has been modified. The original application was to rename the entire Derbyshire Park, but was later modified by the applicant to include only the existing athletic fields. Staff agrees with the amended application and supports this request. I want to give you an idea of where we're looking at there. I've, I've got the, the park area, the general park area up there for you, and I've highlighted and read what is actually Derbyshire Park. The athletic fields are the four baseball fields and then the open field for the, for the football and softball fields. As far as a recommendation, excuse me, as far as a recommendation, staff does recommend approval of the request to rename the athletic- approval of the request to rename the athletic fields at Derbyshire Park and Sports Complex located at 849 Derbyshire Road, Daytona Beach, to the Harold V. Lucas Jr. Athletic Fields. This item will be scheduled for review and action by the city commission. A majority vote of the planning members present and voting is required for approval. And also, I wanted to point out that we do have Percy Williamson, who is the Director of Leisure Services, that can answer any questions specifically on Derbyshire Park and this park renaming, or the facility renaming of the athletic fields. And that'll conclude my presentation.
Are there any questions, staff? Do we hear from the applicant? Okay, we hear from Mr. Regional Moore?
Regional.
No?
Mr. Chairman, members, you know, it's a, I don't think I know most of, hardly any of you, it seems. I used to sit on, once upon a time, and once upon a time, I sat in as assistant city attorney. I'm here simply because I think it's great when we can do something while a person lives, as opposed to waiting until they are gone. It's good for a person who has done quite a bit in this area, in this city, who grew up in this city and who impacted the lives of so many, including myself. Mr. Lucas was my high school football coach. He has been a friend. I knew his father, who was at Bethune-Cookman when my father was president. Matter of fact, Mr. Lucas's father started the business school at Bethune-Cookman and was there long before my dad and my family got here. I'm hoping there was no opposition to this, and usually when staff ever approved it, I usually would ask everyone just to come up and say, "Do what staff recommends," and that's what I'm gonna do, do what staff recommends.
Thank you. I should have called for the applicant first, I'm sorry. Ms. Thompson, please. Very well represented you, though.
Good evening. My name is Delora Hyacinth, and I am the applicant for this, and I am happy to see that the city has recommended to go forward with this naming of the Derbyshire Athletic Fields. There's so much that I could say. When we look at the resolution and basically the purpose with the renaming, the resolution seeks to provide recognition or honor for a person who has contributed to the betterment of the city, the state of Florida, or the United States. And when we look at Mr. Lucas's, as you've been provided, I submitted an application of over 60 pages, and when you look at the contributions that he has made as an K through 12 and higher ed, educational administrator, athletic coach across various sports, and even just as a mentor and as a philanthropist, what he has touched, he has touched the lives of people, of hundreds, even thousands of lives that he has touched, of people that have gone out into the city, into the state, and around the country, and that are making differences where they are. Just one example of a name that you would recognize, former president of Florida State University, TK Weatherall. When we were there at my sister's graduation, which was the last graduation where President Weatherall was the president, of all of the thousands of people there at the graduation, he recognized my father as being there. And that's just one of the lives, and he was one of his athletes that he coached. And when Dr. Weatherall went on to become the president at Daytona State College, well, then Daytona Beach Community College, he hired on my father to be the assistant to the president, and if I hadn't said that already, the applicant is my father, but that's not why I'm here, it's because he's deserving of it. He hired on Mr. Lucas to be assistant to the president in charge of equity. And as I've been kind of getting the word out about what I'm doing, or people have been hearing about it from newspaper articles or what have you, I actually had someone who is currently an employee at Daytona State, formerly the equity coordinator there now, and she asked, "Why didn't you mention about Daytona State and the work that he did here and the work that still remains because of what he did here?" And these are just some of the stories, and I am a born and raised in Daytona Beach, and as I've gone around the community and I've encountered different people in different places, and I've heard the impact that my father has had on their lives, I think of them as isolated incidences. But in the last few years, as we've been kind of going through and putting together history, and I've been spending more time with him and seeing all the things that he's done long before I was born and has continued to do, then I see that it's not just these isolated incidences that I've heard of or that I've been aware of, but he has touched so countless lives, and those people are continuing to touch lives. And that's what this resolution is about. It's about recognizing and honoring those who have contributed to the betterment of the city, of the state of Florida, and the United States. And that's not even mentioning the fact that he is a Korean War veteran. So I could go on and on. I believe that the packet that you have been provided speaks volumes, but if you would actually get out and talk to people who he has coached or mentored or taught, you yourself can think of a teacher that you've had or a coach that you've had that impacted or influenced your life. Well, he's done that, I know he doesn't look like it, but he's 80 years old, and he's been doing that for quite a long time, over 60 years. So I would ask, even as Mr. Moore asks, is that you would go with the recommendation of the city staff?
Thank you. We do have Mr. Harold V. Lucas as a speaker tonight.
Members of the board, anything that I say would be anticlimactic, but I would like to say that I'm just an old ball coach. That spent 60 years or more trying to help the kids. When I came in, I read that Freddie Morell, they had a retirement party for Freddie Morell, who worked for the city for some 30 odd years. I started him off in athletics. I also coached Kathy Weisens, the state championship, as a basketball player. Coach Lynn Thompson, as a high school student, I used to go down during my lunch hour and help him learn to kick the football. He went to the pros as a kicker, averaging five seconds hang time. Somebody else back there, I coached them too. I just want to thank the board for hearing my daughter's request, and I would thank my family and friends for coming out and my support. And I would be honored to have this request passed by the commissioners in a positive way. They say that only a fool represents himself as a lawyer, so I let my daughter speak for me.
Thank you. Next, we have, oh, I'm sorry, we have Mr. Lynn Thompson.
Mr. Chairman, it was the committee. Happy holidays to you. I just want to keep it real simple. I'm a native of Daytona Beach. Those ball fields at Derbyshire were one of a few areas that people of color during that day could participate. But more importantly, it became a platform for success for so many people. And as I look back over the years, there have been generations upon generations of young boys and girls who have been touched by Coach Lucas, not only as a coach and administrator, but also as a very firm disciplinarian, and that's probably where he got his greatest claim to fame, setting kids straight. And I think it's real simple. Some things are right, and the timing is right, and I think there would be no greater gift of this community than to recognize someone who continues to this day to influence the lives of young people and those who are young at heart by his actions and also his giving. The Lucas name is synonymous with community service and leadership, and I think it's just proper and fitting. And I would urge you to move in the direction that the staff has also urged you to move in by unanimously approving this and moving it forward to the city commission for final approval.
Thank you. Next is Reverend Martin Thule.
Reverend Martin V. Thule, 640 Marion Street, Daytona Beach, Florida. I also sit on the Midtown Redevelopment Board, so I know what you guys are going through right now. And all I'm going to say is, yes, Mr. Lucas has done everything that has been said in more, so please do what the recommendation of the staff is.
Thank you. We do have a couple of speakers against. One is Madeline Young.
I'm Madeline Young, the wife of former city commissioner Rufus Buddy Young, who's deceased. But I'm here to bring you some information about what my husband did while he was living for the city of Daytona Beach. He was a city commissioner of Zone Five, which includes the area of Derbyshire, and the park, which is going to be named from someone. I've heard the remarks of the others, but I wanted you to know some information about Rufus Buddy Young. He was a city commissioner for Zone Five for 14 years, unopposed two times, and he served this city well. He was a city commissioner for Zone Five, a city policeman for 20 years, a deputy sheriff for six years, and he was a school administrator for 30 years. I'm going to give you a little biological sketch of what my husband has done in the city of Daytona Beach. As I said before, he was a city commissioner for 14 years, and during that time, he served this city well, even though he is gone now. But I'm sure the records in City Hall will point out the things that he has done for this committee, this city. He was National Association for the Advancement, a member of National Association for the Advancement of Colored People. He was Bethune-Cookman alumni. He was on the Board of Counselors for Bethune-Cookman College. He was a Wildcat of Booster Club member. He was president of the Florida Association of Deputy Sheriffs. He has, he has achieved many awards citywide in many organizations. He was a member of the Second Avenue Association, and he was also a very dedicated commissioner, policeman, teacher, coach. He had in South Florida, in Haynes City, he was the coach of the football team of the high school in Haynes City, in which he won five athletic awards. And when he went to Holly Hill Junior High, he also maintained five scholarships for the football team of that school. He has done much work in this city, and I'm sure that the city records will show what he has done for this city. When he was a commissioner, he worked under Bud Asher as a mayor and Larry Kelly as a mayor. Bud Asher declared Rufus Buddy Young Day, in which he was given many honors while he was a city commissioner and working in this city. And the Derbyshire Park area is the area in which he worked, at which, because that was his zone. And he worked very diligently in his zone as a city commissioner. And I'm sure that with the accomplishments that he has made, he has made those on merit. And anyone who is now working in City Hall, when he was working as a commissioner, can contest to the fact that he was a good commissioner, and he did everything that the members of his zone chose him to do. He represented the commission in many ways, and I'm sure that with the reputation that he has made, he has made merit of the Derbyshire area that is being named by the board now. And I'm sure that he has done a job that would represent the city.
Thank you, Mrs. Young. Our next speaker is Norma Bland.
Good evening. Mr. Chair, members of the board, before I begin speaking, you know, for some reason, any time that I speak, people misconstrue what I say, and I know I don't have a speech impediment, so I don't understand why. First of all, I'm honored to be able to speak on this item tonight. Mr. Harold V. Lucas has been an educator, coach, philanthropist for many years. He was not only that, but he was also my driver education teacher, and maybe that's why I've only had one accident which was not my fault in 45 years. I too gathered several names on petitions and submitted to Mr. Lucas, and I do believe that he should be honored. However, because I am the president of Derbyshire Community Group and a resident of Derbyshire, I have to listen to those people in my community. It has been brought to my attention after receiving a call from Mrs. Madeline Young, the wife of the late Mr. Rufus Buddy Young, who was the city commissioner in Zone Five for many years. Mrs. Young and her family have strongly asked for consideration for the renaming of Derbyshire Park after the late Commissioner Rufus Buddy Young. Both men have made significant contributions, but the athletic sports complex at Derbyshire should reflect a person of outstanding service and contributions to the Derbyshire community. Mr. Harold V. Lucas's name should certainly be honored because of his contributions within our city. our city, especially where his presence and contributions are and will always be recognized. Both men are well-deserving of this honor, but only one name will bear that title. And I'm coming to you tonight as an unbiased person because I have a lot of respect and love for both. But as the president of Derbyshire Community Group and as a community activist, I have a responsibility to play fair ground. Thank you for allowing me to address you this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Bland. Well, we've had several speakers for and against. Board, any discussion?
Yeah, I'm sure, you know, Mr. Young's contribution was tons of contribution, but before us, we have a packet that has an application for renaming. We have the process that it goes through to be renamed. And it's, I'm just thinking that that's, you know, that it's going through the process to be named Harold Lucas Junior Athletic Field.
There are other parts of the park that are available for naming, is that not correct?
Could you address that, please?
Percy Williamson, Director of Leisure Services, City of Daytona Beach. The Derbyshire Sports Complex has a number of elements that encompasses the thirty-four acres of which the sports complex covers. Within the sports complex, we have the area that you have received in your packet, which is the fields. It's a football field and four baseball fields. In addition to that, we've got six, I think it's six basketball courts and seven tennis courts in that area. On the northeastern corner of the sports complex is where the Yvonne Scarlett Golden Educational and Cultural Center is being constructed. So there are other areas of the sports complex that are available. But the only areas that are left at this point would be the tennis area and the basketball area.
Any questions for Mr. Percy on that, regards to that? Thank you. Any other discussion, board? Yes, Mr. Weisman.
I don't think there's any doubt that there's a great deal of distinguished service here from this man. He's really done a lot for our community. Having been on this board a long time, we've struggled for a long time about how, actually the length of, actually the length of the title that we give to things. Actually, I thought one of our major mistakes a long time ago was actually when we did International Speedway Boulevard, and we went into a lot of controversy on that, and of course, now we don't call it that. We call it ISB, or most people do. Actually, I find that most, the thing is, we don't call it George Washington Mine. We call it Washington Mine. And we do the same with Jefferson and Lincoln and all the best. So I wonder whether, and actually, I noticed when I went back to the guidelines, it says that the name should be the surname or the shortest name possible. And actually, I wonder if we just, I wonder if we just couldn't name it the Lucas Athletic Fields and not have the whole name. It's just, actually, I find it unwilling. Actually, I think that's what it's going to end up being anyway, because people are not going to say, and not going to say they're going over to the entire name field.
Well, I think that's, oh, I'm sorry. I understand where you're coming from, and I'd say that it probably will be called the Lucas Athletic Fields, but just to recognize Mr. Harold Lucas as his contribution, it could be, it could be younger kids coming up and they go Lucas Athletic Field, but they wouldn't know what Lucas that was, but they know Harold Lucas name from their father, their uncles, their coaches, whatever.
Yeah, I think the point is, you could name the park that, but you could put a, certainly you could put a sign in there or put a plaque that would explain all that.
Could I speak, please, if I'm not out of order?
Well, actually, you are.
Well, if I'm out of order and a citizen of Daytona Beach, I request to be heard. Thank you. It would be a dishonor and a disservice to name it just Lucas because his father and mother named him Harold V. Lucas, if this would come before the board. See, what I need for you all to understand is this, this is our community. This is my community. You don't need to make all of the decisions about my community. You need to listen and allow us to address what we want in our community. That's all I have to say, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Norma. I think we've heard from everyone. Ready for a motion?
Make a motion, we approve park facility renaming development 2012-135 Harold V. Lucas Junior Athletic Field.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Carry on, the motion pass.
We don't have him. Yeah, that's how I felt. I thought, I'm not getting into it. That's right.
Ready for other business? Downtown Blue Road Redevelopment, Ms. Washington?
Yes. The Downtown Blue Road Redevelopment Board met.
If you could move out so we could continue.
Have our meeting. Thanks.
Okay, we met on December 4th at 12:00 noon here in Commission Chambers. There were several items of discussion. We discussed conditional use for La Tasca Cafe, that was approved. There were discussion items for design standards for signs. There was a discussion item for Blue Road Projects, and some of those projects include, included an update with the Clarion, public parking for Jackie Robinson Park, and then funding, funding and new grants for that area. The redevelopment projects, there was a list. Blue Road was one of the items, the Blue Road Bridge, Sickler Park improvements. We talked about Beach Street and when the completion would be, or when would it actually begin. And we talked about possibility of sidewalks on the east side of Beach Street. There were a number of items that were discussed. There was a meeting on the fifteenth regarding the Riverfront Marketplace. In January, this item came up. There's going to be a workshop regarding the train station and wayfinding. So it was a real intense meeting, a number of items discussed, and a lot of work to be done in the new year.
Thank you. We don't have a Midtown report, Ms. Benjamin's not here. Main Street South Line, Ms. Remark? I think this is your very last.
Well, except we didn't have a meeting. There was no business before us, so the meeting was canceled. So there was no December meeting. A special meeting, I was not, you're talking about the board meeting. Though I will tell you, I do know the Board of Adjustment passed the variance for the property that came before us last month, the foot of Main Street, right along the water there, the rec, the variance for their parking, but they did incorporate the five recommendations that the Main Street Board had made as a condition of that variance. So that did happen today.
Well, I don't know if we'll have public comments. I don't see John in the audience.
Mr. Public's not here.
I think the city needs to do a whale check.
Maybe, I think so. Are there staff comments?
Yeah, two things. In your folder, there is a flyer for a training session that, I believe it's the V Card. There's a whole bunch of sponsors, but V Card is, I think, the primary one going to put that together. And I think it's going to be very informative and encourage anyone that has the time to attend that. It's on January 12th at Daytona State College. It's primarily for newly elected officials, planning board members, and also planning staff, and I know some of our staff will be there. So encourage anyone that can attend that to do so. Also, there is tentatively, I think it's what you were mentioning, a tentatively, a transportation workshop. I think tentatively, the date is January 16th. They're going to do it. Right now, it's tentatively at four o'clock before the commission meeting, which would be at six o'clock. I think they're still working on the agenda, and it isn't finalized, but keep an eye on the calendar, because I think that's what, at least that's where it is today. And only other thing is just to wish everyone a happy holidays and a fantastic new year, and see you after the new year.
Well, the next was the board comments, and of course, I was going to say the same thing for Merry Christmas and Happy Hanukkah and Alonzo.
All those things.
All that, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Anyone else?
Just with one speaker that we had, you know, I kind of take exception to saying that this is my community or that's your community, and you don't know this community. My community is Daytona Beach.
Daytona Beach, that's correct.
And I do not separate one area out from another in my decision-making process or in my thought process. I'm representative of the city of Daytona.
One of the issues that we have to consider is, there's a process for anything we do. And there was only one individual that followed the process from beginning to end. Although I understand what she was trying to do, it was a little late because tonight was the night for us to vote.
And, but certainly now she'll, Mrs. Young will understand the process if she wants to move that forward.
Exactly.
Just like, you know, Mr. Weisman said, that there was other areas that are named.
There are two areas left available to be named.
Then they move forward with the process, because I'm sure both of them were deserving. I was surprised after reading all about.
Mr. Lucas.
Yeah, that it didn't say Saint. Every page was just, you know, about his accomplishments, and he had mentored and, you know, and did all that stuff.
Both men were well-deserving of what was stated here tonight. Having been taught by some of them, you know, having been coached in the mines, really, as I was growing up in the sixties. Buddy was very popular, and I got to know Mr. Lucas when I moved to Daytona Beach. Now, we've gone a long way in what we come into tonight, and I hear what you're saying about you represent Daytona Beach, we all do. We heard her, but, you know, sometimes it's best to just be quiet and listen, and it ends quiet and quick.
I didn't say anything, man.
No, you done good.
Actually.
I was burning.
We both were biting our tongues over here.
You know, there is that, there is that point.
And I'm sure, you know, Mr. Weisman did not mean to offend her personally or the family, you know, and he's right, it will be shortened and, you know, she, it was a little over, out of proportion. I'm sure you didn't mean to offend her and, you know. Or the family.
Actually, this is something that's gone on for years. Actually, I think the City Commission just last month or a couple of months ago was talking about how they thought that we got to be a little careful about, you know, about what we do with names. And I'm just, you know, I was just trying to follow up on that.
And actually, I was on the commission when the, it actually changed for the land development code the last time, and I'm, I mean, you talk about stepping on toes. Naming is a huge thing.
Well, and the perfect example of that is the four names of Main Street to Fairview. Okay, now, of course, Mr. Ingram deserved, you know, he deserved that honor, but in the bigger picture, though, also you now have a street that has four names.
Well, I think that's sort of what finally led to the 1999 changes, and I'm sure the commission, because as, as thinking changes about stuff, your law eventually catches up with it, and I'm sure that they will make, you know, from what it sounded like, the commission is looking for some changes as well.
Well, the only thing I'm thinking is, is that each time you do this, you simply reinforce the ability that you can. And that's why I was trying to get it cut down a little bit, so we don't go through this all the time.
I think in the final analysis, we certainly heard something very nice about two gentlemen in this community that helped try and somehow people.
Will they follow the process and will, you know, do the same?
Yeah, well, hopefully, somebody outside will take her aside and tell her what the process is. But I think the City Commission was harkening back to the discussion we had last year about the length of street signs when we were renaming School Street, and how many letters we could put on the street sign. It was an economic issue.
I remember.
But we seemed to vote for the longest possible.
We should have done Speedway Boulevard.
Yeah, it should, I agree.
Yes.
However, there was a lot of pressure from out there for us to have International Speedway Boulevard. So that's why it ended up the way it is.
There are no other comments?
I still say US 92.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everyone.